Good evening and welcome to the June 16th meeting of Pitt County Board of Commissioners. We now have roll call.
You've got to push the V S two, don't we?
Yeah. Everybody is in attendance, so thank you.
Pass it down.
Pass it down. All right, now we have the pledge by Mrs. Phillips. I'm sorry, hold on. Chairman Manning, if you'll pray for us, please, then Ms. Phillips. Got ahead of myself.
Got it.
Dear and Father, we come before you humbly with praise and thanksgiving. We pray, dear Lord, for your blessing on our nation, our state, and our county. And guide us, Lord, as we take up the people's business this evening, that your will be done. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Now, Ms. Phillips.
Tell her, introduce her, say.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raylan Phillips. I am now going into the 12th grade. I go to J H Rose High School, and I am currently the vice president of our H O S A at our school. I am a teen leadership recipient for the City Chamber of Commerce. I am also newly, just recently, got the internship at the hospital through the Health Science Academy. Thank you for having me this afternoon, and at this time, please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, in liberty, and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five.
Mr. Manager, uh, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I, that life ain't done just for us. Been a while. We can get it right, child, don't worry.
Thank you, but I would like to pull number two, three, four, and six from the consent agenda.
Just two, three, four, and six?
Yes, two, three, four, and six.
And move them to items for decision?
Yes, because we have to vote on them, so we have to be under there.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Have a motion, have a say.
Second.
All right, please vote. Well, push it one more time. There you go. Motion carries. All right, now we move on to public addresses to the board.
Mr. Chairman, you have one person signed up to speak, Angela Cooper. While she's coming forward, if the attorney would read the statement.
Thank you. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
My name is Angela Cooper. I live, um, okay, do I have to give my physical address on camera? I live in Crystal Acres. I live in Greenville. I'm a resident of Pitt County. I'm not going to give my physical address because of what I'm going to talk about. But I do live in Crystal Acres, off Old River Road, in the subdivision. Mary Williams, Ms. Mary Williams, I'm in her district. And some of the things I want to talk about, it does not affect her district. It affects, may need a response from Chairman Holloman. So, good evening. Congratulations to Janice Gallagher, Ms. Anthony Gallagher, for Employee of the Month. Much as my husband called you, you earned it. I'm, the reason why I'm here today, he's, my husband's name is Keith Cooper. He can't, he couldn't show up today. But I'm here, and I normally don't speak, but I need to, about animal services in Pitt County. The new, um, person that you hired to take Chad Singleton's place, she's doing a wonderful job with the resources that she has. But she needs some help. And when Chad was here, Chad Singleton, and I miss him dearly, because he had a vision and with the, not only the animal services, he also had, where they can call, we can call anytime we want, and they always answered the phone, and he had spade today. So when he left, it seemed like all his services left with him. I don't know if there's any way that you can help animal services with some of the resources. Maybe a veterinary school, contract with them, get a fellowship, whatever, or maybe E C U can start an animal, a vet, veterinary medicine program or something. But they need help, because we're having problems in our area with animals. We had a pit bull, several pit bulls, and they've killed the little baby kittens that we were feeding the strays. Not only that, we trapped one on the weekend, can't pick, can't get them, so you've got to let them out. So they run in the house, they chase the cats, so it's just not safe. So that's one issue where they need the resources. And, and like I said, I'm not discounting animal services. It's just that you got a new person, you have new staff there, but they need the resources. And Mr. Barnhill's been doing a wonderful job. He's always there, and we call him, but it's just a limited staff. So please consider that in your budget, volunteers, donations, whatever, maybe volunteers, I don't know if I can get my, I'm not going to go with that route. But the second thing I want to talk to you about, there was a shooting in Crystal Acres, and the person that was arrested, I believe, is Falcon, is in Chairman Holloman's district. We don't know the details with the Sheriff Department. My road is the only road you could come in Crystal Acres and probably exit unless you go around Bronte. This happened when kids got to school. It's vague, it was in the paper, broad daylight. I don't know if it was a shootout at the OK Corral with the neighbor. We've never had that problem, but it was vague in the paper. It said one shooting. But from what my neighbors were talking about, it was more than one person. Who was the driver of the car? You're going to get them, get them all. The person that lived in the house they were shooting at, we don't want them to come back. This is summer. And this happened during daytime, and I live right on the main road that you come in. So the house that was shot at was down at the cul-de-sac at the end on my street. So can you look into it, the person, ask the Sheriff Department, check with them, please?
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you.
All right, is that it?
That's all that we have signed up to speak.
All right, we will move down to our presentations.
Yep, and if, Mr. Chairman, we can go down front for Employee of the Month, and as we're coming down, if Officer Pablo and anyone he brought with him, if he brought anyone else, well, you can come forward. Okay, Mr. Chairman, and those in attendance and those watching, one of my favorite things to do each month is to announce and present a certificate to our employee of the month. This is the 39th time that we have done this since this program started, and each time, the nominations and submissions just get stronger and get better. And so tonight, we offer our congratulations and recognize Officer Kevin Pablo with the Detention Center. In recognition for his dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens that we serve, we have a certificate for you. But I want to share with the, those listening, a couple of the things that your nominator said about you in your role as a model employee and as you inspire others. It says that you always exhibit the highest level of professionalism, integrity, and calm authority. It says you consistently respond swiftly to emergencies and disturbances. You have an ability to prevent and manage violent situations to help maintain a calm and secure environment. And it says beyond your core duties, you mentor and train new officers, emphasize the importance of safety, procedures, and professionalism. You lead by example, fostering a positive team-oriented work culture and inspire those around you. You've been with the Detention Center, with us, in the Pitt County, in Pitt County for two years, and we are so grateful to have you onboard. So with that, we have a certificate for the chairman to present to you, and $100 direct deposited into your bank account to thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much, yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, and, Mr. Chairman, if we step aside, I'll call Alice and Jennifer up to present the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. And Dwayne Cooper, I think, is going to be joining them as well. If you'll come forward, we're just going to stay to the side, and, um...
Good evening. Chairman Holloman, County Manager Gallagher, Commissioners, hello. So we want to first recognize our committee that makes the decisions for the recipients. We have Dwayne Cooper with United Way, Chad Tucker with E C U Health, Jennifer King Congleton with E C U Health, and Alice King with Culture Arts and Recreation. Pitt County worked with the Office of the Governors in selecting six nominees to receive the 2025 Governor's Volunteer Service Award for Pitt County. Created by the Office of the Governor in 1979, the awards program recognizes North Carolina's most dedicated volunteers and has bestowed these awards upon thousands of North Carolinians who have shown concern and compassion for their neighbors by volunteering in their local community. So now we're going to announce the recipients of the 2025 Governor's Service Award. And so I'm going to call your name, and then read a bit about what you've done, and then so if you can come up and receive your pin and certificate, and then line up for a picture later. Larza Kantara-Garo. Larza has been a volunteer volleyball coach with Pitt County Culture Arts and Recreation for over eight years. She's just not a coach. She's a mentor, a leader, and a role model. Not in the audience, I don't see her, but Deborah Coleman, we will announce her. Deborah has volunteered at E C U Medical Center for over seven years. She volunteers in patient escort and is extremely dependable. Deborah Coleman. N C Regional Screening Team. Anybody here for me? Come on up. The N C Regional Screening Team is an important component of the American Red Cross volunteer recruitment and engagement process. The screening team begins by building relationships and setting realistic and attainable expectations for the Red Cross and volunteers. Maddox Piskor. Piskorik? Piskorik. Maddox has been a volunteer at E C U Medical Center for the past three years. Each year, he continues to go above and beyond in his service, and during his second year, was selected to be team ambassador. Ms. Jackie Ponder. Jackie established the Unnatural Resource Fair Institute almost 33 years ago. The institute is committed to educate and mentor the young generation on how to be creative and at the same time reuse, reduce, and recycle discarded materials. And so the next person that we're going to recognize, this person, this year, we recognize an individual who has worked in her organization for over 38 years. For the 2025, we honor Ms. Jennifer King Congleton with a Director of Volunteer Award. And I don't know if Ms. King Congleton was able to make it, but Mr. Chad Tucker will accept her award. And last but certainly not least, every year, the state recognizes 20 medallion award winners. The D H Conley High School J R O T C Battalion recently received one of 20 Governor's Medallion Awards for the state of North Carolina. For more than 40 years, the cadets in the D H Conley J R O T C program has volunteered for North Carolina Senior Games State Finals in Raleigh. So if you would come up and be recognized, please. And they received a very special medal that is around her neck right now. It's very beautiful. So thank you all for your service, and now we will take a moment to take a group picture, so if we can kind of squeeze in a bit.
And a round of applause.
All right, moving on to our next presentation by Ms. Natasha Holly.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, County Manager Gallagher, as well as Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you on tonight. My name is Natasha Holly, and I serve as the CEO of Integrated Family Services, which is located at 2305 Executive Circle. We provide behavioral health crisis services across eastern North Carolina, including right here in Pitt County. I also want to take a moment to thank Commissioner Huggins. It was through an initial conversation with her that this opportunity came about. She encouraged me to share this information with the full board, and I greatly appreciate her support and leadership in making the connection. I want to take just a few minutes this evening to make you aware of several important services that are currently available and one exciting new resource coming this fall that are helping to strengthen the behavioral health crisis system in our community. Why is this important? I'm glad you ask. Behavioral health includes mental health and substance use. When someone is in a behavioral health crisis, they may be experiencing anxiety, depression, psychotic symptoms, suicidal thoughts, addiction-related emergencies, or other issues that put their safety and stability at risk. These types of crises are touching every part of Pitt County, whether it's within families, law enforcement agencies, EMS, schools, and I can go on and on and on. The need for a strong crisis system is growing, and too often, the emergency room or law enforcement intervention is the first option. Both of which are not designed to address these complex situations. We want to change that. We are changing that. On the slide that I believe is before you, you will see services that we have put together to create a true crisis continuum for Pitt County. The first one, which I believe is on the right of your screen, is Mobile Crisis Management Services. We operate a 24/7 mobile crisis team that serves all of Pitt County. Anyone, law enforcement, families, schools, Department of Social Services, health departments, the list goes on and on and on, can call the toll-free number that is posted, and our team will respond where the individual is, whether in person or virtually. We de-escalate crisis situations, help people connect to their appropriate care, and prevent unnecessary trips to the emergency room or involvement with the, the justice system. In addition, we have established co-responder partnerships with several law enforcement agencies in the county. When our team is fully staffed, these partnerships have proven to be effective in allowing officers, as well as mental health professionals, to respond together, ensuring safer outcomes and reducing strain on the criminal justice system once again. We remain committed to strengthening and expanding these partnerships going forward. The second one I am excited to share, this is the Behavioral Health Urgent Care, also known as the B H O C. This facility will be located at 3005 Statensburg Road. This is our newest service, a behavioral health urgent care center that's opening right here in Pitt County in October, the first one in the east. It will be a walk-in clinic for urgent mental health and substance use needs. It will serve both adults and children ages four and up, provide same-day care, stabilization and intervention, assessment, case management, and connections to longer-term treatment. The individuals who come through this facility can stay up to 24 hours for observation and additional support, and we will be able to serve 12 individuals at a time. The third service that I want to bring to your attention is what we call the Open Access Clinic. That clinic is located at 2305 Executive Circle, where individuals can walk in Monday through Thursday, between the hours of 8 to 2, to begin outpatient care. No appointment needed. Want to reemphasize that, no appointment needed. Individuals can be seen in person at this location or virtually, because we recognize that technology has definitely increased accessibility. Our O A, O A C clinic serves ages four to 21 and adults in college as well, because we want to be able to accommodate those individuals who are in college, whether it's a four-year college or community college. In addition, we have recently begun collaborating more closely with E C U Health to improve transitions of care between hospital-based services and community-based behavioral health support. And this is important now more so than ever because of the soon opening of E C U Behavioral Health Hospital. I want to again thank Commissioner Huggins for her support and encouragement of this collaboration, and understand that this work, this partnership, can help build a stronger crisis continuum within Pitt County. Now here's where we would welcome your continued support. The first thing is awareness. Many community partners are still unaware that these services are available. They have been available for close to 20 years. Commissioner Manning, I believe we actually did some work when we started Mobile Crisis Services here in Pitt County. It's still here, but people aren't utilizing it. So how can we work together to get information out, so people can not go to the E R for behavioral health crisis, but call an entity who is more equipped to be able to help those in need, if they are not at risk of hurting themselves or someone else? The second thing is partnership. We welcome opportunities to collaborate within the county, whether through joint efforts with law enforcement, work with schools, or alignment with other county initiatives. We're there. We want to be your partner. Finally, advocacy. As we prepare to launch the first B H O C in the east this fall, we will need ongoing support to sustain and strengthen these services. People have to know about them in order to use them. Your leadership and voice are critical to ensuring that Pitt County continues to invest in building a robust and accessible behavioral health crisis system. In closing, this is about keeping people safe, supporting families, easing the burden on emergency rooms and law enforcement, and helping individuals recover and thrive. These services are here. They're working, and with your help, they can be even stronger. If you want to reach out to me, just call Integrated Family Services. They will find me. We would love to connect with you all individually and to partner in whatever way in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, now, Ms. Noel Smith, Leroy James Farmer's Market Report.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, and Madam Manager. My name is Noel Smith, and I am the Farmer's Market Manager at the Leroy James Farmer's Market of Pitt County. I am going to give a brief update of kind of a year-to-date report of how things are going at the market, and just share a little bit about what we have upcoming. I just first want to thank you for the additional funding that has been put into the market through the budget. It was more than anticipated, and we are very excited to get to work utilizing the funds to improve the market experience for everyone in the community. We are also excited to share the improvements made to the market recently as a result of the capital improvement project. We've done roof repairs. We've been able to pave the full parking lot for customers, which has really helped with accessibility to the market for a lot of our visitors, and are working on garage bay door repairs for our vendors to make their process in the morning a little bit easier, too, when they set up. And we do have a picture to share with you of our newly paved lot, just so you can get a perspective. We have quite a few people who pull through and pull around on the weekends, and this has been long awaited by many customers and vendors, so they've been really excited to, to have this, this month. So I want to jump into Farmer's Market attendance. We had a special event market in January and February this year, and then we began our weekly markets on March 1st. We are well into the season now and have seen some really great numbers. I do a number of things to assess foot traffic each Saturday and Tuesday when our Tuesday markets begin, and I would typically give you guys a monthly average, but I wanted you to see the breakdown of every market that we have been able to record the attendance for over the past year. Unfortunately, we don't have very consistent records of what was going on prior to these, these dates. So June to 24, to June of 25 is kind of what we have right now to work with, and we'll continue building on that data as we collect it. But this is just a good example of what our foot traffic trends have looked like. With us hitting our record of over 1,000 visitors at one of our special event markets in the holidays last year, after I came onboard in September, and then our early spring in 2025 has already been outperforming our peak season of 2024, which we have been really excited about. And our grand total year-to-date is over 10,000 visitors to the market, which is a really great number for us, and we're excited to see it continue to grow. Vendor retention, so this is just a look at those vendors that we have in the market and how long they've been with us. So in 2024, we had a total of 28 vendors, with 15 of them being classified as agricultural vendors. And you can see in the chart here that we had 44% of them that had been in the market for 10 or more years, and then we had 37% of them that had been in the market for two to five years, and then about 18% who were there for their first time. Now in 2025, we have a total of 39 vendors, and that does include our new P R N vendor spot, which is a seasonal, kind of rotating vendor spot. We have 25 total vendors classified as agricultural, and then we have these updated statistics. So 21% of our vendors have still been there for 10 or more years, and then we have 44% that have been there for two to five years, maybe a little bit more than five years, but not quite 10, and then 34% their first season in the market. So prior to this presentation, I sent out an anonymous survey to all of our current vendors. We've had 20 participate so far. We're hoping to see more participate as the season goes on. Some of them have not sold yet at the market, so they are not going to participate until they get more market days under their belt. But this is a summary of their answers to some of the questions that we thought would be relevant to our update for you today. So in 2025, we asked all of the participating vendors, do you believe that foot traffic has been higher at the Farmer's Market this year? And 65% of them voted yes, with 30% of them saying, I'm not really sure, I don't keep up with it, and then 5% saying no, they did not believe so. Have you had more new customers or repeat customers at the market this year? So 60% said that they have seen more new faces this year. They've seen a wider variety of customers. And then we've got 10% who see repeats, that kind of come to see them each season, 5% that are not sure, and then 25% whose first year it is, so they don't really have anything to compare it yet. So happy to see a majority on both of those. And then, how would you describe your sales at the market? So of course, the vendors are independent contractors. We don't get a lot of details about their sales each week, but they sometimes give us voluntary feedback to kind of update us on how things have been going for them throughout the season. And in this survey, 50% of them noted that their sales are higher year-to-date in 2025 than they were last year, with 15% noting that they're about the same, 10% noting that they felt like they were a bit lower, and then 25% noting that this was their first season. And, you know, one thing that comes with increased volume of vendors and customers is a little bit more competition in the market, a little bit more variety of shoppers, and so... and so we think this statistic is great considering all of that. And then the last thing I want to do is invite you to our Summer Solstice Market this Saturday. If you haven't been to the farmer's market recently, I have always told people, I think that's the best way to get an idea of how things are going. There's so many new things going on, there's a lot of new faces, a lot of new vendors, and we would love to have you guys out there. I think you received an invitation, it's from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We'll have a lot of different things going on, special event vendors, we'll have live music. It should be a great time, and we would love for you to not just take my word for it, but come see for yourself how things are going at the market this season. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, moving right along, Mr. Sam, your financial report.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, members of the Board, Madam Manager. Tonight, I bring you the May 31st, 2025 financial report for the General, Solid Waste, and EMS Funds. We're 11 months into the fiscal year, at this point, or 91.7% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 85.7% of anticipated revenues, and we spent 82.7% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected 96.7% and spent 91.5%. EMS, we have collected 101% and spent 88.6%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Got a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
It's not working.
It came on. Came on, but it went off.
There we go. Now you got two of them that ain't pushing. Just need to, I think you can take the cord out and just swap it. And we'll just move it around. Mr. Russell Hill, if you want to come on up while we're figuring this out, so we can move right along. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Good evening, Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. This evening, I present to you the May Tax Collection Report. The fiscal year combined tax collection rate through May 31st for real and personal property was 99.29%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 99.35%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes for the, using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation to approve the May Tax Collection Report as presented.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, now moving right along, Madam Manager.
Yeah, I have several dates for you on your manager's report. Your next meeting date is July 21st in this room at 6:00 PM. You only have one meeting for the month of July. And then we convene two meetings again in August, beginning on August 4th. Item B, just a reminder that county offices will be closed this Thursday, June 19th, in observance of that holiday, and on July 4th, 2025, in observance of Independence Day. Item C, a reminder that we are super excited to be cutting the ribbons on two of the twin community centers. On July 21st at 4:00 PM at the Government Circle Park, and on July 24th at 4:00 PM at the District Park. And so we hope that you'll all attend for those exciting events. I think that if you've not been inside one of them during the process, you will be amazed at how beautifully they have turned out. Item D, a reminder for those who are signed up to attend that the NACO Annual Conference will be held July 11th to 14th of this year. And then, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow, I have two items to add on. One relates to Spay Today. Back in June of 2024, this board authorized, after a lengthy presentation, the transition of spay neuter services from Spay Today, who was closing their doors, to the county, and authorized us to accept the donation of their two buildings and all of their equipment so that we could continue to provide spay neuter services, at least for shelter animals, since they are no longer in operation. Wanted to update you to let you know that we have received the donation agreement from Spay Today for your signature as authorized in June of 2024. We'll transfer that. And then also, as part of the original agreement, Spay Today had occupied a small office within the two manufactured buildings that they're transferring to us. Given feedback from the state inspectors about the work that needs to be done in that building and the traffic and the sterile nature, they have advised against us allowing an outside entity to use office space in that facility. And I felt a little bad about that, because they're donating the buildings and all of their equipment for free. So with the Board's permission, I'd like to bring back a lease that allows them to utilize one small office in the Technology Enterprise Center, which will allow them to keep a Pitt County presence for their files and their office space at no cost. And if the Board will allow, I can work that lease and bring it back to you as an item for consent at your next meeting. That would be great.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes.
Thank you, and we look forward to accepting all of that. And in your budget, you did authorize the hiring of a veterinarian to perform services in that building. So I know you heard about some of those concerns in your public addresses this evening, and that will also begin to address those concerns. The last thing I wanted to share was your strategic plan. We're grateful that you authorized us to execute the contract for the strategic plan at your last meeting. This morning, I had a kickoff meeting with the vendor, and we are excited to start that project. We have a clearly defined scope of work as set forth in the contract and in the response to that bid. And in order to kick it off, the vendors will, our consultant will be here on your next meeting day, July 21st. And on that day, and that's a big day for the Board, we have a meeting that evening, we have the ribbon cutting at 4 o'clock that day. Leading up to that, our consultant will be here, and she would like to meet with each Commissioner one-on-one to introduce herself, get to hear some of your ideas and policy visions, and start this process. She'll also meet with department heads that morning, and then she'll continue the engagement as we have outlined, and then she'll circle back with the whole Board to keep you included in the development of the strategic plan for the county. So I wanted to make you aware that if you are here that day, we thought summer schedules are difficult, but July 21st may be a day you're planning to be here for the Board meeting and the ribbon cutting. So you'll be hearing from Catherine in our office to fill a 30- to 45-minute time slot that day to meet with Barry Dunn, our consultant for this strategic plan. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, we're excited about it, and that is all that I have.
All right, moving on to items for consent. With moving items 2, 3, 4, and 6 to decision. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote. All right, moving on to items for discussion, Commissioner White.
Is my mic on? Okay. Yes, I will be very brief. So you have a four-year resolution that I have worked with county staff on, and just a little backstory on this. In April of this year, I was diagnosed with hormone-positive, HER2-negative breast cancer. This all started back in February, I was 34 at the time, I'm now 35. And my prognosis is great, it was called early, it's stage 1A, so it's not spread, so my treatment will just consist of radiation and medication, no chemo or anything like that, so that's good. My prognosis is so good because it was detected early. However, at 34, you're not, you don't get mammograms, you know, the, I'm sorry, I cannot talk. Mammograms don't typically start until you're 40 unless you have an issue or whatever. The reason I went to the doctor can be described as nothing less than divine intervention from God, because it was not a sign or symptom of breast cancer, but it led to the discovery of the place that ended up being cancerous. And so, with all that being said, early detection saves lives. And I have said for many years that mammograms need to start at 30, and colonoscopies need to start at 40. These are two types of cancer that are very easily treatable, as long as they are called early. Early detection is key, and it saves lives. So that is what the resolution is. I have just really felt led to use my testimony and my story to advocate for some change that will hopefully give other people the same option of early detection that I have, and hopefully end up saving some lives.
I don't really see why this can't be voted on. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote.
And you're going to take it further, right?
Yes, unless there's any objection, I will submit it to National Association of Counties for their federal legislative agenda and present at the annual conference in July in support of the resolution.
Lauren, thank you so much for being bold with this, because you're helping someone in the future that may not, and that takes a courage. And thank you so much for being courageous on it.
Thank you. And if I could add just one more thing on that to acknowledge, as I just looked over to Wes Gray in the audience, we did share this resolution with the Board of Health at their last meeting. And while there wasn't any action that they would need to take, they were aware of it and did not have any objection.
All right. Moving right along, items for decision, and it's back to you.
Okay, the first one you heard about in my manager's report at your last meeting, and this is a request from the city of Greenville to make a one-time allocation of $75,000 to their affordable housing program, which will build 50 affordable homes over the next 10 years in partnership with workers, students from Pitt Community College, and most of them will be located in West Greenville. What's different about the first time I presented this until now is that after exploring this program further, it does appear that the homes will need to be built on Pitt Community College's campus and then transported to the site. And that was for regulatory reasons discovered by the community college. But the import and impact will still be the same. It'd be my recommendation that you allocate that funding.
All right, any discussion? Got a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes. All right, moved along, resolution by the County of Pitt to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement, Ms. Caitlin.
Good afternoon, I'm Caitlin Houston, I'm the Pitt County Opioid Settlement Coordinator. And I do want to thank you for your time this afternoon as we are presenting the recommendations for this upcoming fiscal year for the opioid settlement dollars. So what is the opioid settlement dollars and where has it come from? So there's been a national settlement that has occurred with your large pharmaceutical companies, for example, your Walgreens, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Walmart, and they are organizations that played a role in feeding the crisis of the opioids. The guidelines on spending, so when this funding first came to North Carolina, it was decided by the Department of Justice that a memorandum of agreement would be created that outlines the rules, regulations, and the requirements for spending of these dollars. Those rules and regulations are outlined, and they are enforced by the OSTAT team and Core NC, which we meet with on a monthly basis. Outlined in the MOA is the Strategy A, which Pitt County falls under. So these are the 12 ways in which spending can occur with the opioid settlement dollars here in Pitt County. The reporting requirements, so there are a lot of rules and regulations that go along with this funding. One of the major ones, that the funding is 100% used for opioids. Whether that is in assistance of programs, it all has to be focused on the opioid patients. The reporting requirements are in-depth, there is an impact report per strategy. So if an organization is approved for several strategies, they do have to complete an impact report per strategy, which can be in-depth and very lengthy. Some of the questions are listed on your screens as examples of what organizations do have to require during their intake to be able to have that information. Organizations, as far as challenges go, is showing that 100% of the opioid funding is used for consumption in time. Another struggle that some of the organizations find is that this funding is reimbursement-only. So the allocations that we make, it is for reimbursement only. So they do have to have funding to be able to receive that reimbursement. It has also been asked by the OSTAT team that all organizations that are subrecipient are falling within the last three stages of implementation. So that is your initial full and further expansion is where they're asking for all organizations that are subrecipient to fall within. So for fiscal year 2425, these are the seven programs that were allocated funding. The green is what was awarded, with the blue being what has currently been expended. This funding does end on June 30th. So funding allocation, so earlier in the agenda, it was asked that the Board recognize $628,000. That is the eligible dollars that we have to allocate out for fiscal year 2526. So it is our recommendation that the funding for fiscal year 2526 be $615,000. Any of the unspent funds from fiscal year 2425 does roll back into our account starting on July 1st, and is eligible to be allocated back out starting the next application cycle in January of '26. The opioid settlement dollars, this is an 18-year program, we're currently in year 16. The funding is unknown what we're going to receive, when we're going to receive it during that year. So we can only go based off of what we currently have in our account, not what is to look for in the future of that fiscal year. So this has been our application timeline. So the letters of intent were released on March 3rd, the application opened on April 1st. On April 7th, 8th, and 9th, we did host three meetings at the Public Health Building, where the organizations that were applying were invited to come. They had had seven days to review the application at that point. They were able to come in, ask questions. We also presented to them really going over the rules, regulations, and that this is reimbursement. During that time, we were able to answer any questions that they had in regards to the application, the rules, regulations, and the budget that was required for them to submit. During that time, we did have 12 people attend those meetings, representing nine of the organizations. On April 30th, the applications closed, and on May 27th, our review committee, which was compiled of five individuals that did have professional experience with individuals, along with someone that has experienced loss from substance abuse. The review committee did meet four times. During that time, they reviewed 13 applications covering 21 of those 12 strategies, and requesting a total of just over $2 million. Tonight, I am here to make the recommendations by the review committee of recognizing seven organizations covering those 10 strategies for a total of $615,000. The applications that are being recommended tonight for allocation for fiscal year 2526 is Engage ENC, Pitt County Coalition of Substance Use, or known as PICSU, Pitt County Public Health, Pitt County Behavioral Court, Integrated Family Services, Road to Recovery, and Pathways to Life. The organizations that have not been recommended by the review committee are Town of Aiden, Life Ministries, Pitt County EMS, ECU Brody School of Medicine, Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Medicine, Victorious Living Ministries, and Haven at Blue Creek. Do we have any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know initially it was Victorious Living was not included in the list because they did not receive, so we could only see who did receive. However, they have not received, I'm curious as to the reason why, because I know that we initially took them out of the budget because they missed the deadline, but yet we were thinking that they would get these funds. I just know that the good work that they do at the jail, so is there a particular reason why?
Yes, so I have actually been in communication with them. They were one of the organizations that attended one of those April meetings on the 7th, 8th, and 9th. So they did come and ask- So they did come and ask in-depth questions about their budget and what their opportunities were. When the review committee was going through the application process, they had a very strong application. But this funding has to be one hundred percent opioid-related. So when reviewing their budget, we needed to know the exact percentage within the detention center for some of their request. So out of their request, the Sharps program is one hundred percent an allowable expense. So after the review committee reviewed what the Sharps program's expenses were, it was found that it was only twenty-nine thousand dollars. Twenty-eight of that being, um, excuse me, twenty-seven of that being for salary infringement of two employees. So only twenty-five hundred dollars of it was going directly to buying materials, which were textbooks for their Sharps program curriculum. So we have communicated with them. That is one thing I would like to highlight is any organization, whether they've been approved, they're recommended or not recommended, we are setting up times with them so that over the next six months, we can really work with them to make sure that they have every opportunity in January when the application process opens back up to have that strong application and a strong future.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Do we have a motion for the resolution? Got a motion? Got a second, please vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Need a designation of voting delegate to NACO and the NCACC.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to offer the name of Commissioner Sharon Rochelle. Not Sharon Rochelle, Rochelle. I get it right. I screwed up, but anyway, I'd like to offer Sharon.
You have a motion? Second. For one or both?
I screwed up the name all the time.
For one or both?
Huh?
For one or both?
Well, um...
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Is that all right with you?
All right, thank you.
Please vote. Motion passes. Melvin will be happy. Reappointment to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council? I know.
Yes, um, for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, it's found on page one hundred and forty-seven of your notebook. It is being recommended that Whitney Kirby be appointed to fill the seat formerly held by Mitchell McCafferty on the JCPC board.
Any discussion? Got a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes. Let's see, number five, reappointment to Pitt Greenville Convention Visitors Authority?
Yes, Jay Pastardo is currently serving on the Pitt Greenville Convention Visitors Authority. Um, his, um, term is about to expire and he is eligible and desires to be reappointed. If reappointed, um, his term will run from August first through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Got a motion? Second, please vote. Reappointment to the Farmer Planting and Zoning Board?
Yes, Dana Harrell, um, is currently serving on that board, is eligible and desires to be reappointed for an additional term. And if, um, so permitted, his reappointed term would run from July one, twenty-five to June thirtieth of twenty-eight.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Reappointment to the Greenville Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, this one's a little quirky. You may recall that back in February, um, this board, um, appointed William R. Currie and Clayton Self to the Greenville Board of Adjustment, um, for a three-year term. When we communicated that information back to Greenville, what we didn't realize is that they appointed them just to fill an unexpired term, which ends on June thirtieth. So in order for them to have their first three-year term, this board needs to take action again to appoint Mr. R. Currie and Mr. Self to that board.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Item number eight, which is... was number two, Budget Amendment Sheriff's Office Contract to Security. You'll be taking this one?
Yes, depending on the question.
Okay.
Okay. Number... number two, which was the budget.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna know, are they off-duty?
Yes, so my understanding is that this is a contract that the sheriff would like to enter into to provide security services that will provide twenty-four-seven coverage, um, from June through July at forty-seven dollars and fifty cents per hour, which totals the hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred, forty-four dollars in revenue. And that exceeds my dollar authority. Um, but this is... would be an off-duty, um, officers who would, um, contract at the contracted rate to provide service in the community. And it would take four, uh, four officers twenty-four-seven. From, and I can tell you, I'm sorry, page eighteen. It's on page eighteen in your agenda package. And it will serve, according to that contract, um, from May twenty-sixth until July fourth, um, for one set of officers. And then from June third to July fourth for another set of officers. Three shifts, eight-hour shifts at a time, using existing deputies, who I'm assuming would be off-duty because that's how they, um, do, uh, this type of contract. The other thing I'll make the board aware of in this contract is forty-seven dollars and fifty cents is the average rate as determined by the sheriff's office for, um, a deputy sheriff. And so, um, this may... this amount, um, revenue may or may not cover the actual cost of providing that service, particularly since some of them may be earning overtime, um, if they've already worked their shift. And some of them, if they're at the higher end of the pay scale, may be earning more than that on an hourly rate. So the reimbursement is based on the average hourly rate of the officer and the actual officers assigned. And whether or not they're eligible for overtime in that week will determine the actual cost.
Pleasure, the board. Motion and a second, please vote. All right, item number... it'll be coming number nine, which was number three. Budgetment... Budget Amendment Social Services.
That, uh, my question to that is, um, the money that is given to DSS for Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program from, uh, GUC? And the eligibility for, uh, that particular service, is that different from other eligibility requirements or services of programs? I mean, like, income or how many people in the family? Or just, is that eligible to be given?
Yes, so that's an excellent question. I don't see Sharon Rochelle or anyone from Social Services, um, present here this evening. We can defer that to the next meeting if you want that answered. Generally, I can answer that we bring... we get these funds on a periodic basis from Greenville Utilities that are paid back out to Greenville Utility customers for past due bills. My unders... my general understanding of the program is that as with any other, um, assistance program operated by the Department of Service, there are income and eligibility requirements, and it goes to serve those most in need. But for specific eligibility requirements and how that compares to other programs or emergency assistance programs, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, and... and are those funds available all year? Not just one at a time or what?
Um, I'll have to get that answer to you. I know that we get neighbor-to-neighbor funds all throughout the course of the year, whether that be for heating or for cooling. But I'll... I need to find out for certain. I don't want to tell you wrong. If you want me to bring that back on next meeting's agenda or if you want to...
Hold on just a second. Much pleasure, the board.
Go ahead. The... the funds that are requested here, does... are they necessary to continue to provide, um, standard service? In other words, if we don't act on it, are we kind of delaying administrative things? That if we don't... if we... if we go ahead and handle it and get the questions answered later, um, are we...
First law, not the process.
So... Um, well, I think what could complicate this is that we're at the end of the fiscal year. And if these are funds received this fiscal year and need to be paid out in this fiscal year, it would be helpful to have it approved so those... those funds are in an account authorized to be paid out because we can't pay out from them until they're recognized in. So, yeah, if we...
That would be another question, whether they fall into the fiscal year, um, budget or not? That... this particular... these funds?
Yes, so...
These funds will... no, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so these funds, the additional revenue was received in this fiscal year and has to be added to the books in this fiscal year because it was when it was received. And then, once it's received, then an expenditure can be authorized from those funds, which would also occur in this fiscal year.
And some of those funds that come from GUC are funds given from other sources to GUC Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program. So that is a question whether they still would fall into that budget.
So I can have Ms. Rochelle put together a memo that we can put into your weekly packet that lays out the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program, the source of funds, the eligibility expenditures, and, um, how and when they are spent.
I'm not objecting to... to the, um, fund. No, that's not what I'm...
Just want additional information.
Just additional information. So I move that we approve it.
Second. I will...
Motion and a second, please vote. All right, item number ten.
If I may...
Yeah, please.
I do think it is important just to note that if we do have a substantial movement of funds, and I think five hundred thousand dollars to qualify, certainly would be nice to have someone from the department here, um, to... to answer a question. I know that oftentimes when we do have things on the consent agenda where there might be a question that... that we have someone here to answer a question if it's raised and then they... they leave afterwards. So I do think that it would be nice to have someone here so that we're not put in a position of having to go without answered questions. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you, sir, so noted. Uh, item number ten, which was number four, Budget Amendment Social Services.
And as you just stated, about five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, my question here is, um, when you're talking about moving mon... and not that I don't want money moved to foster programs, that's not my... my question. Um, but I am wondering if we had money left... I'm looking for the board. That we had money left in the low-energy budget. Why do we have money left in the low-energy budget when there are people who I'm sure still...
So, so excellent question. And on this particular one, um, I had, um, a... a good bit of conversation with, um, Sharon Rochelle and her, um, business officer to understand this because my understanding, which was correct, is that low-income LEAP program is one hundred percent funded by the federal government. And you may recall that there was a lot of conversation about that funding being cut and the inability to use that funding. So, um, prior to two years ago, that Low-Income Energy Assistance Program was not fully funded by the federal government. It was funded, um, uh, a million dollars of the LEAP funds were county dollars. And then there were federal funds that supplemented that. Um, when the federal government took over... and they were passed through... they weren't passed through funds, they were county dollars. So when the federal government took that over, what I learned is that the Department of Social Services did not... was advised not to remove tho... those local dollars from their budget, and they left it in their budget. And so earlier this year, you will have seen a budget amendment that came from those funds. I questioned it then, and then I questioned it again now. And when we questioned it and worked with Financial Services, um, we removed... they had that in their proposed budget again this year, and we removed those funds because they... um, the reasoning for putting it in was because in case the federal government didn't fund it. But it's a federal... federally-funded program. And so we discovered that expenditure. It is not in the proposed... in the budget that you've just adopted. Um, but there were funds in a low-income home energy assistance line that were not used because federal funds, um, supplied the funds for that program. So as we look through that budget, when I come to you and talk about that line-by-line review to find duplication or funding that shouldn't be in there or funding that's in there in more than one place, and we're able to reduce thirty-six million dollars out of the rec... requested budget to your recommended budget, a million dollars in savings this year was from that line. That line, though, was still in the budget, and they did legitimately overspend on the foster care line because so many, um, children had that gap of being either, um, in a... they call it a respite placement or an emergency placement until they could get into a foster home where state funds were approved. And so that line did legitimately go over for legitimate expenses. Um, what we would have had to have done was come back to you and ask for a budget amendment from general fund dollars or from your contingency or from your savings account. Um, we did not do that because when we discovered this fund, any overage has come from here. In addition, we asked the Department of Social Services, and this was... is this one that you pulled also? This is not one that you pulled. But in your... in your consent agenda also, you'll see that quarter-four payments to the Department of Social Services was reduced because they didn't spend all of their funds. And so that, um, additional money in their budget offsets the, um, need for that fourth-quarter expenditure. And so that minimized the, um, impact of that line being in there. Good question, I have the same one. We do our very best to make sure every line is exactly the way it should be. And we do our best to be transparent, even if it's in an item for consent, about where money is coming from and where it's going. But yeah, I had, um, multiple questions about that one and several conversations between Financial Services, Department of Social Services, and my office.
I just couldn't understand why we had some left.
Asked the same question.
Uh, the number six?
Oh, we got to finish this one first. Pleasure, the board. Got a motion? Second, please vote. All right, item number eleven, which was number six, Budget Amendment for the animal service donation from a citizen for three hundred dollars.
I... I just want to... want it... want the public to know that, um, that citizens do, uh, make donations. Uh, and just to... to say thank you to that citizen that donated three hundred dollars to animal service. Pass out.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Commissioner comments will start to my left. Commissioner Watt?
Um, I just wanted to thank county staff for their help and support and working with me to get this resolution drafted. I wanted to thank my fellow board members for their support in helping, um, get this passed tonight. And I'm not used to talking about myself up here, so I got a little tripped up over my words. But I did want to say that, um, I'm cancer-free now because of early detection. Um, anybody out there listening, if you are of age to get your mammograms and colonoscopies, go ahead and do it. And if you notice that something is off with you, um, go to the doctor and advocate for yourself.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Nunnely?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a minute to, uh, to thank all of the first responders and... and anyone in government services who responded to the storms last night. I know they were, uh, much larger than expected. Um, a lot... a lot of, um, widespread damage in areas and... but, uh, but folks were on the ground and... and did a fantastic job of keeping people safe. And just to continue to echo, if there's floodwaters, don't drive through them. Not that... that we need to hear it, but it is hurricane season coming up, so this is... unfortunately, we had a little bit of taste at the beginning, but I wanted to thank all of our emergency services and the first responders, um, in... in our municipalities and in our county.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, I just want to say, um, thank you, Lauren, for, um, making us a... I just want to say thank you, Lauren, for making us aware of, of that. And certainly, I agree with what you were saying. I want to also thank the county manager for reaching out to Natasha Holly and asking her to come and speak to us and bring us the information on the Integrated Family Service Behavior Help Urgent Care that's going to be opening here in the fall. I met her at the Rules Summit. And I believe we talked on the phone. I think she reached out to me before that meeting. But I met her at the Rules Summit in one of the breakouts. And I happened to go in and there was a seat, that young lady sitting there, and I sat beside her. And she said, and we looked at our name tags, she said, "You're just the person I want to talk to." I want to see, we've talked on the phone. So, so after hearing that, you know, this service is being had here in, in Pitt County, Greenville, I said, "Sure, we want to know more about it." So I'm glad she came tonight and, and make us aware, make Pitt County aware of the services. I believe she said three, three kinds of service they will be offered to our citizen. One, really, you know, so a person doesn't have to go to the emergency room. And if that can help our citizens, that is a real plus. So thank you for reaching out to her and inviting her to come and share the information with, with us here in Pitt County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Manning, you've been quiet.
I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just also like to say to Commissioner White, thank you for sharing your story with us and for using your testimony for good to save lives. It is an absolute privilege to, to go along this journey with you. And however I can personally be of assistance, please let me know. Also, Commissioner Higgins highlighted one of our presentations tonight. But I would just like to also say thank you to Noel for the other presentation for highlighting the momentum behind the farmer's market. And I'm really grateful for the vision that is being created and executed there. So other than that, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any comments, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Push this to top.
You do.
There was a lot of water coming down yesterday on Sunday and today. And this afternoon, the rain arrived again, and there are a lot of areas that are flooded. I like to suggest to the residents, I made some notes so I wouldn't go long. I, I like to suggest that you take documentations, take your camera out, take pictures. You don't know what kind of effect that the water would do for you. And so take pictures, some afar and some up close, so that when something come up with your home, you will be able to have something to prove that it happened. Having been in that, I know you need it. I'm suggesting that you do that, share it with your neighbors, and do not walk in the water. Because this is when the snakes, the water moccasin moves around in the water. You put on rubber boots and protect yourself. We don't want anybody getting sick from it. You know, your family members, and I want y'all to stay safe, be careful, and be safe with what you do during this rainy day. It's unusual, but we have a lot of water out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you.
You got anything else you'd like to add?
Uh-uh, let's go home. I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn, if y'all don't mind.
She nodded. I think she, are you in second?
Oh, yes.
Please vote. Thank you, good night.